Today is May eleventh, two thousand twenty-three, seven thirty. This is the work session of the Borough of Andale Mayor and Council Meeting. Linda, please read the Open Public Meetings Act.
In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the notice requirements have been satisfied. The meeting dates for the year are confirmed at the annual meeting, are posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building, and on the Borough website, published in the record within the first ten days of the new year, and copies are sent to the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger. Notice of this meeting by the May second, two thousand twenty-three sunshine notice was sent to the record, the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger, and has been posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building and Borough website. Councilwoman Homan, absent. Councilwoman Lovasola?
Here.
Councilman O'Connell?
Here.
Councilman O'Toole?
Here.
Councilman Yakarino?
Here.
Councilman Deluiseo?
Here.
Mayor Wozinski?
Here.
Okay, so we have a presentation today of our municipal budget. Welcome Paul Lurch, our Borough Auditor, our CFO. Allison is also here, and we actually will not be doing the proclamation that is on this presentation today. So we're going to skip that and just do our municipal budget presentation. Welcome, Paul.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm here, obviously, to present the twenty-three calendar budget. And I provided a handout for the council members and anybody in the public. We have extra copies here if you'd like a copy. So twenty-three, I'm going to go right to page two here, and we're going to talk about the total revenue breakdown and the twenty-two versus the twenty-three budget appropriations. I will start out by saying the big difference with twenty-three, obviously, with twenty-two is has has a lot to do with the sale of the water and how that's really factoring into this particular budget. We did go through a state review of our budget document. We've answered any questions that the state had at this point. We've gone through correspondence. We've satisfied all of their issues. A lot of them are just misunderstandings or technical issues that they weren't quite clear on. We resolved all of those issues. So we are clear on the budget as it's presented to adopt. We did have, and I know Allison informed everyone of the local finance board meeting we had yesterday morning, and that was to talk about the cap adjustment, which we have now in the budget. In essence, what happened is is that once you you had operational expenses in the utility, most of those expenses did go away, but there were some administrative expenses that now function back into the general operating fund of the Borough. And so what we're looking for is to get a cap adjustment because now we have two caps we deal with, right? We deal with the appropriation cap and we deal with the tax levy cap. So we got a cap-based adjustment going forward to deal with those additional costs coming in. So that's that's the major, really, the major differences, and we'll talk as I go a little bit further when we talk about the appropriations, because you'll see the sum of the variances are are large, and it really deals with the direct effect or the effect that the sale of the utilities having on a current operating budget going forward. So, but before I get started, overall, obviously, it's an excellent budget. As you know, I'm not telling you anything new. It's really just more for the public out there. You know, the budget is basically flat, zero for municipal portion of the budget. Of course, the municipal portion is the only thing that's in your control. And as you see, as we go through these slides, it's typically twenty-five, twenty-three percent of your budget. On top of the municipal, we have to now fund, obviously, there's the the library, which gets added in, and we have a half a penny on the open space. We have the county, and then, of course, we have both schools. And I'll kind of go through that a little bit. But I but the main focus is always, at least in my mind, is to go through the municipal side because that's really all you can control as a governing body sitting up here. And you've done a great job this year. So when I look at this twenty-three to twenty-two, total budget on the bottom here on the revenue side is slightly down forty-six thousand dollars. How do we make up the budget? Surplus is is one of the major components. It's really free balance. It's money that you've accumulated over time that you have available to balance your operating budget. Every municipality does it for the most part. We have done it for as long as I can remember here as well. So the surplus number that we anticipated is one point one million, down from one point two million dollars. So we use less surplus, which is actually a good thing, given the fact that you were able to maintain a zero tax increase. Municipal revenues, municipal revenues really are anything that's not specifically identified. And so what makes up the major increase here of one hundred and twenty-four thousand? Crestwood Lake, budget to budget's up roughly thirty-five thousand dollars. The Ramsey sewer charge for the interconnect is up roughly forty thousand dollars. As everybody knows, interest now, interest earnings are up from what they were two years ago. So we had a larger increase in our interest revenues in twenty twenty-two. So budget to budget, we're up seventy-two thousand dollars on what we're expecting to take in on the interest side. The pilot revenue is down from what we had budgeted in the previous years. So the pilot right now compared to what we budgeted versus what we have in the anticipated twenty-three budget is roughly down eighty-four thousand dollars. And that should then go back up to those normal or the levels that were originally expected at some point, once once the project is completed and fully rented out. Construction code revenue, we're anticipating additional fifty thousand. There's been activity just like at every other municipality. It seems like soon as COVID hit, everybody wanted to stay home and put in pools and do all kinds of additions and and projects. So that's up fifty thousand, and we just have some other miscellaneous stuff that's in here that's up twenty-two thousand. So that makes up the bulk of one hundred and twenty-five thousand. State aid, believe it or not, it's up. What happened is is that in the tail end, or I guess I should say, the middle of twenty-two, the state of New Jersey gave the allotments of what the state aid for each municipality was going to be, budgets were struck. The state went and did their budget, they adopted their budget, and then they decided to distribute additional funds to all the municipalities. And they said, listen, at this point, anybody who has a budget that's completely adopted, we're not going to force the reduction, but we're going to make you take that extra dollars, put it onto the balance sheet, and use it as a revenue when you do your twenty-three budget. And so really, what that represents is represents the amount that came in last July that we were unable to use in the twenty-two budget. So now we're using it in our twenty-three budget, and that's why you have a slight variance.
Do you know if that's going to change at all next year? I know there is something circulating to all the mayors about signing a petition about for state aid for next year. Is there any?
Yeah, I have no, I have no idea, yeah. Haven't heard anything on that. And then miscellaneous revenue is just some miscellaneous items in here. Really, it's the cell tower rents are down roughly eighty-five from budget to budget, and then we have some other expenses that went up roughly twenty-six thousand. Not much of a variance. Delinquent tax revenues, the anticipated is down. Well, that's a direct correlation on the fact that your collection rate is up. So it's just a seesaw or a give and take effect. So at the end of twenty-two, you collected more in your taxes, you had a lower receivable balance. So when I do the budget for twenty-three, obviously, I can't realize receivables that we've already collected in twenty-two. So it's a good thing as well, honestly, it just means that you did a better job on the collection of twenty-two, which meant there were less delinquencies that we can anticipate as a revenue in twenty-three. So having said that, those additional collections that we had in twenty-two really wound up going into your fund balance. And then it gets to the final component, and you know, as we build the budget, as obviously the mayor and council knows quite well, we go through the budget process, we go through the appropriations, we start there first. We determine what's needed to operate the budget, operate the municipality at an efficient level. Then we go through and we compare, we look at all the revenues that are available to us. And then the end result is 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 taxation. So you can see that taxation, which includes the library, is up thirty-five thousand dollars, less than a half a percent. Page three. This is very typical for Allendale, has not changed. I pulled out last year's presentation, the numbers are almost identical. Okay, there's really not going to be any change here. It just shows that, of course, nothing new, that, you know, seventy-five roughly percent, seventy-four percent comes from taxation. And then we have the other component, you know, of our total budget, the state aid is only seven percent. So it's a miniscule on that component. Going to go to page four. Page four deals with the tax levy cap. The two thousand and ten law that was enacted, which basically says that the municipality cannot raise taxes more than two percent on an annual basis. But of course, just like everything else in life, there are exceptions and exceptions and exceptions. So the two percent never really means two percent, you know, debt services outside, capital improvements outside, and now we have other variable components that are now outside. Some of the other items that are new this year that are outside are going to be for, well, we had it last year, which was the insurance, but there's a local component of it. What happened this year is that there's additional money that's outside on the appropriation cap as well. We're going to get to that in a minute. But really, what this says is that when you look at the amount to be raised in taxation on a municipal portion for twenty-three, we're at the ten million nine hundred and seventy-seven thousand three fifty-six. The state of New Jersey is saying that you have the ability to raise another one point five million if you wanted to and still be within the statutory limits of the law. Which is great, in essence, because really what you never want to see is you never want to see this thing max out because then that means, well, we've been taxing away at our maximum level year after year after year. So that's actually what you're looking for. Page five deals with the budget spending analysis. And this is the appropriations. And we've kind of, we've kind of grouped them into specific categories here. Just talk about some of the larger variances. If it's not in a specific variance, it's going to be in general government. So that's the catch-all. And that catch-all is going to include anything you can think of, and that's not specifically here. It'll be engineering, accounting, legal, operational taxes, finance. You know, you name it, it's going to be in that particular component, relatively flat, only up sixty thousand dollars current year. Some of the bigger components that we had increases, and I think everybody's aware of the fact, when we look at insurance, insurance went up dramatically, especially at the state health benefit component side. So your insurance component here, which includes health benefits and workers' comp and general liability, that's up two hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars or eighteen percent. Now, when you look at year to year, last year was up fifteen percent, now we're up another eighteen percent. I mean, so that's where we're dealing with some real issues on trying to control cost containment. So what happened this year at the state level, I think they realized, or at least somebody realized down there at the legislative level, that it's unsustainable on the appropriation caps. Because what was happening is is that even if you were able to tax your way out of it because you had additional revenues, you had additional assessed values coming in, your community was doing well, healthy, healthy on those components. But on the spending side, we start dealing with these large increases that we're just talking about. Because of this percentage, which is based on now the cost of living, plus we do the the COLA ordinance, which we do every single year. So that max is three and a half every year. That's just an easy way to put it. Sometimes the COLA is at a half, and then we do a two and a half, sometimes it's at two, we do one and a half. So it's three percent max. So what happened this year is that the state allowed municipalities now to go outside the spending cap on certain other categories. And so now we added into health health insurance side of it, we added gasoline to it, we added workers' comp, garbage, recycling, pension bills, you'll see one up through the roof, too. So what they said, okay, so, you know, we have this old law that goes back to nineteen seventy-seven, believe it or not, okay, which started out this whole cap presentation, keeping municipal spending down. And so now they realize that, to me, it's really an antiquated component because I think what you should really be concerned about, and what you are concerned about, is taxation. It's not about the spending side. If I'm able to generate additional ratables and revenues, and if I can keep the average tax levy flat, well, or cost of living, why should you be punished on the appropriation side? So they came up with this once, I don't know, I'm trying to think of the right way to say. It's a one-year adjustment. I don't believe that we can go to year two without them rolling this in permanently. I don't know what that would happen. I mean, you think about the hundreds of thousands of dollars that's sitting outside of cap now for this one particular adjustment. So and and I kind of kind of have that feeling anyway, because we spoke to local finance board yesterday. And that was one of our concerns, is the fact that health insurance went up dramatically, and we had some component of it that was sitting in a water utility. And I'm like, well, we need to bring that into the operating side of the cap-based adjustment. And their answer was, well, we have this this new law that was enacted that's allowing everything to be outside of cap on the increases on health insurance. So what happens if it goes away then? I mean, it's not a permanent statute.
I mean, none of these things are going to be going down. Garbage is going to be triple A.
Yeah, that's been our question all year, is wondering what's going to happen next year.
Oh, yeah, I mean, I think that you'll see that. I don't know where you are in the contract period with garbage.
Next year.
Yeah, it's it's. My experience has been it's it's, you know, gone up dramatically.
Oh, yeah.
Dramatically.
Yeah.
So I I listen, I think at the end of the day, what's going to happen is is that they're just going to get rolled in as a permanent now adjustment.
You think that?
Yeah, I mean, you know, so you look at this capital, and we say it's this, but then we just add exception on top of the exception. I mean, in my mind, I think we should just eliminate the seventy-seven law and just focus on the tax levy law.
I didn't realize it was from seventy-seven. I thought it was a Chris Christie thing, actually.
Well, Chris, yeah, it kind of evolved and evolved and evolved, but it started all the way back nineteen seventy-seven statute, so. So, you know, having said all of that, you'll see when we get to the next slide, or two slides, where we talk about how much we have left on the cap appropriations. But going back to this schedule, so you know, the main component, obviously, is insurance is up huge, eighteen percent. Police services are kind of in line with most municipalities. And I think, yeah, certainly, you're, I'm sure, well, well aware of the fact that, you know, two percent is never two percent, right? As we all know, because of the step increases and what have you, so that typically goes double or a little bit more. Fire, pretty much in line, parks and wrecks, really not that bad of a difference here. Public works actually went down from year to year. Talk again about sewer and solid waste disposal, so really, this is your Northwest Bay. Plus, it also includes your garbage and recycling. Garbage went up ninety thousand this year, recycling went up sixty-five thousand this particular year. Utilities and bulk purchases, probably the biggest increase here is gasoline. It was one of the other exceptions that were they gave as well, coming outside of cap. Library contribution, you know, that's a statutory number, right? That's one-third of the mill. There's nothing we can do about that. But that was a healthy increase, too, at eight percent, so. Statutory charges, statutory charges are up a hundred and roughly twenty thousand. Really, what makes up that number? It's really the pension numbers. So you have you have a component that we pay annually for public employees, and we pay for the for the police, public, police and fire. And that pension bill went up a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from twenty-two to twenty-three. We had some drop in deferred charges of roughly thirty thousand dollars, and that's just some of the emergencies that we had going forward. So that's a major increase. That's now outside the cap, too, on the appropriations. So they're not limiting us on that component. The biggest item here really is is the debt service component and the capital improvements. And it's obviously a direct reflection of the sale of the utility. Because as you know, when the utility sold, right, you had that roughly eighteen million dollars, and you were by law, by statute, required to to fees all existing debt. And so what it really meant was is that as far as from a debt component, really, that bulk of money was used for that particular purpose, right? We had a small piece that was paid out in February that we had to run through the budget document. And then because we had that dramatic drop in the debt service of roughly one point nine million, then the other side was the increase in the capital improvement fund. So it was kind of a balancing act, so the debt service dropped, and then the increase in the capital improvement fund. So capital improvements fund is money that you've set aside, which is used for the down payment on major facility improvements. It could also be used to to fund or fully fund ordinances. And I think what's going to happen is is that as we go through twenty-three, the rest of the balance sheet or the P and L on the sale of the utility is going to flush out. Right now, you have escrow money, you have roughly three point five million sitting in escrow. At the end of the day, you may wind up with somewhere around that five million dollar number, depending upon what happens with the escrow money. And then that money is going to be set aside on the balance sheet, and it's going to be used for the reserve for sale of assets, which means that you're going to have the ability at that point to do what you want with it, fund improvements, fund projects, however you see fit. So at the end of the day, it's going to be a very healthy balance sheet. And I think you're you're set up for success in the future here. Reserve fund collected is up just a nominal twenty-five thousand. You know, that's again, because we're paying taxes and collecting for all three components. We have to pay them a hundred percent, even though we don't collect it a hundred percent. So page six, I think if you pulled out last year, which I did again, just to see how the allocations are, it's very similar. I think the biggest issue or the biggest difference is going to be the debt capital service over on the right side.
Yeah.
You know, so last year was roughly thirteen percent, now we're roughly seven percent. And then you have some modifications going through the rest of it, really, which are kind of nominal. But you could see, obviously, that, you know, just like every other municipality, the police side is is the largest chunk, and then solid waste is is climbing. So insurance is climbing as well, so. I'm not telling you anything new. Page seven, page seven just kind of summarizes what I talked about with the nineteen seventy-seven law. And here's where it gets a little dicey, right? So our current budget cap spending that we have in the budget is ten million eight hundred and thirty-four thousand oh seventy-eight. The maximum permitted is ten thousand, uh, ten million eight hundred and sixty-nine thousand eight seventy-eight. So we're just slightly below the cap. So that's going to be something that we're just going to have to keep an eye on and and focus on, especially when we build the twenty-four budget. And that's why I'm saying that, you know, at this point, it's imperative that those additional cap appropriations that we have out there for one year gets rolled over into a permanent going forward. Because I don't know what everybody would do. I mean, you know, I, I mean, we're talking a couple hundred thousand dollars probably that we've got outside now just because of this this temporary adjustment. Okay, then page eight is really the history of the tax deportment. And we put it in here, even though the focus really is just on the municipal side. And what happens here is is that, you know, when you look at this at face value, you say, oh, boy, look at all the tax rates went down. True, tax rates went down because the assessed values went up. And that's why we have the reduction in the actual rate itself, but also the average house value went up as well. So you can see that, what that looks like from year to year. We knew the school, schools, we had the actual numbers, the county is still an estimated two percent. And then if I was to go to page nine, this has not changed. So for every dollar, twenty-six cents is coming at it or coming to, municipality, eleven to the county, sixty-three cents, the lion's share goes to the school. And then the final page is page ten, which really says what is the effect on an average home. Now, on the municipal portion alone, it's zero, but when you factor in the library, it goes to twenty-six cents, twenty-six dollars on average. And you can see what happened is that the residential value, the average residential value, went from seven hundred and twenty-six thousand to seven hundred and seventy-one thousand. So in essence, the tax rate went down, but the average house went up in value. When you do the math calculation, like I said, it's basically flat on the municipal side. I don't know if anybody has any questions?
Obviously thorough as usual.
Questions?
That would be very thorough.
I would like to thank Suzanne Lovasola for heading up our finance committee for the first time ever. And she actually enjoyed it. She actually enjoyed it.
Thank you, I did. I know, shockingly, I really truly did.
And with that, we, in the middle of all that, we had our CFO retire, and then we welcomed in a new CFO. So we've had a lot of changes and happy to say that we made it through the budget pretty good, I think, right?
Excellent, yeah, absolutely, no doubt about it.
So it's one of those things, you know, you do it once a year, so you have to kind of, that muscle memory, sometimes you have to relearn all the unique nuances of a municipal tax, you know, a municipal budget. But we had a good, a new good teacher, so it was, it went well, though.
Seriously, thank you, Allison, thank you, Paul, and your whole team. It was, it was a learning experience for both of us. We got through it, and I think we have a budget to be proud of this year, kind of, Amy keeps saying a once in a.
Yeah.
Once in a few year opportunity here to take advantage of the state of the water system, so.
And give the break to the residents if we can't do it. We're happy to do that.
And you set up the future.
Yeah.
Which is good.
Okay. Any other questions, anybody else? So we now have the public. Allison, did you have any comments? No, no, no. All right, what time are we at? Pretty good. So we now have the public comment portion of the meeting. Anybody from the public wish to speak? Not seeing anybody. We can, actually, I think, before agenda review, I'll just maybe hop right to the council reports we only have. Do I have enough time to do a gender review? All right. Let's do a gender review. We have second reading of some ordinances that we introduced at the last meeting. This is second reading and public hearing. A lot of it was changes and a lot of the wording in our ordinances, but we'll go through that in more detail in the regular meeting. We have, of course, our local municipal budget that we are introducing and adopting today, adopting, I should say, in public comment today. And then also, we have a Burton County open space grant application, our kids' head agenda. There is some fun stuff on here. We have the approval of our holiday observers' celebration and our list of bills. Did our finance committee look at our list of bills? Thank you very much. And we have some Crestwood Lake salaries, and the rest is considered just routine. And that is our agenda for tonight. So with that, we can do a couple of council reports. Ed?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be quick. Aside from the start of the spring season, when we had the, it seemed like a month of rain, the season seems to be going along nicely for our arc sports, and the fields are looking great. Crestwood Lake is looking great, and that'll be opening in about two weeks. And that's all I have for right now.
All righty.
Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Deluiseo?
Thank you, Mayor. The Land Use Committee has not met since the beginning of April. Reschedule this month's meeting, which would have been this morning till the twenty-fifth. But so I really don't have anything on the land use side to report, other than a couple of emails from a couple of residents who had some issues and concerns that they wanted us to discuss, so they're on our agenda.
Okay.
Land Use Committee meeting. And also, on behalf of the holiday observers that you mentioned it, I just want to say thank you very much, you know, in advance. It's a great borough to allow us to do the fireworks celebration if we will approve it. And also, in the spirit of giving back, which the holiday observers have been doing that for a hundred and four years, we, the membership wants to do some repairs that are necessary to the grandstand facility where we store a majority of our materials. It's been leaking for many, many years. Water comes through basically the seating area and comes down below, and basically gets everything we have in there wet. So the membership decided and approved the ability for us to do a volunteer project, which will be at no cost to the borough, obviously.
Excellent.
Do some some good repairs to get that watertight and make it sturdy.
Excellent, thank you very much. Councilwoman Lovasola?
Are we stopping at eight or?
We are, so you can do it in two minutes or? I'd like to wait, I think.
Not that I have that much, but I just want, I don't want to be rushed. Matt, you want to do yours?
Yeah.
Now you have one minute.
All right. So we haven't had a public safety meeting since our last meeting, but new police officer applicants are progressing through the onboarding process. As of this evening, we have five new officers in various stages of the onboarding process, replacing officers who are leaving us for a variety of reasons. We've been working with Mr. Wiss to button up some personnel issues. Kickoff date for the new digital payment option for daily parking in the transit lot is May twenty-fifth. So be on the lookout for signs and a public notification campaign coming out in the next week or so. And finally, the department, I spoke with Chief Dylan this morning, spoke with Joe yesterday regarding setting up plans for security at the fireworks, assuming it's approved this evening. All that I've got with my one minute.
All right. Need Tyler, all right, Tyler.
All right, very short report this evening. Crestwood Lake, we're really looking forward to opening that, thanks to the DPW for their efforts. I was up there on Sunday and Monday, so things are really moving along there, some of our capital improvement projects. Two, two other things I wanted to know quickly, John and I went to a golf Um, two uh, two other things I wanted to know quickly. John and I went to a golf pilot seminar yesterday in Brielle. Uh, so out of that, we're going to look to set up a meeting to make sure that we're utilizing the best, the services to the best of what we're really subscribing to. And then also some things to look forward is Allendale. We're going to be hosting the Northwest Bergen Council Members Association at the Red Barn uh in early June. So I'll send an email out to everyone, so hopefully we'll get a good turnout for that.
Perfect.
And thank you to the finance team for their work on the budget.
Good timing. Okay, motion to adjourn the work session.
So moved.
All in favor?
I.
Okay. Hello, everybody. It is eight o'clock and this is the regular session, uh, the mayor and council meeting. Hello, everybody in the audience. Hello, everybody at home. Um, Linda, will you please read the Open Public Meetings Act now, please?
In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the notice requirements have been satisfied. The meeting dates for the year are confirmed at the annual meeting, are posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building and on the borough website, published in the Ridge in the record within the first ten days of the new year, and copies are sent to the Ridgwood News and Star Ledger. Notice of this meeting by the May second, two thousand twenty three sunshine notice was sent to the record, the Ridgwood News and Star Ledger, and has been posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building and borough website. Council, Councilwoman Homan? Absent. Councilwoman Lovasola?
Here.
Councilman O'Connell?
Here.
Councilman O'Toole?
Here.
Councilman Yakarino?
Here.
Councilman Delavatio?
Here.
Mayor Lovasola?
Here. All please stand with the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. That is the flag which stands for the nation under God, indivisible, with its infinite resources throughout.
All right, um, so we have um, are going to have a moment of silence in just a moment, but before I'd like to just say a few words about the two people, unfortunately, that we won't be having a moment of silence for. Um, the first is Stiles Thomas, and I think everybody knows Stiles Thomas if you've lived in Allendale for more than a second. Um, he died uh May seventh and he was ninety nine years old. I mean, Stiles was just near and dear, I think, to anybody who's ever met him. He was a wonderful man, just in general, but he was also a lover of nature and the environment. And he uh also projected that onto everybody else. So you just met Stiles and you just all of a sudden just loved nature and the environment. In fact, that's when I first met him when we were trying to preserve the land over uh where actually some of the condos were, but he was very um instrumental in helping us actually reduce the number of condos in that um in that space. Um, he's a lifelong Allendale resident. He was actually born here. He went to Ramsey High School, got into some trouble there. He told me this himself. And um then he actually um went into uh the army, I think it was the army, right? Um, so he served in World War Two. He was the first sergeant in Company B um in the parachute infantry regiment, and he served in Europe. Um, he was also a local business owner in town. He owned uh Thomas Insurance Agency, which is that building um right across from the clock tower that we call the Allendale Flatiron Building. And um in his entire life, he worked tirelessly to preserve nature. Um, he was president of the Fight Nature Association. He was our um, our celery farm marsh warden. And actually, he's the one that uh saved the celery farm. He worked with Mayor Edric Edward Fitzpatrick in Allendale to preserve the celery farm. And as we know, that is a hundred and seven acres of wonderful preserved uh land where people from all over come and birders come from all over, um, because we have like, I think, over a hundred and twenty six different type of varieties, including a bald eagle. So um with that, we are just so sad to to hear about Stiles. And um, um, our second person that we would like to have a moment of silence for is Sam Wright. Um, he was a longtime Lee Memorial Library staffer. He was eighty two years old. He worked in the library for fifteen years. He was that friendly man that every time he walked in behind the counter, he was there to greet everybody. Um, he always showed up for work with a smile on his face. He always liked to answer questions for all the patrons. Um, and he was really well known for all of his book recommendations. Um, he just retired from the lab library last year after fifteen years, and he survived by his wife of sixty one years and four children and fourteen grandchildren. So if we could just please have a moment of silence at this time. Okay, thank you. All righty, so now we have um approval of minutes, April twenty seventh, two thousand twenty three work and regular session minutes. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second? Second, Lovasola.
Okay.
Councilwoman Hom- Homan, absent. Councilwoman Lovasola?
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell?
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole?
Yes.
Councilman Yakarino?
Yes.
Councilman Delavatio?
I abstain.
Okay, um, next we have second reading and we have public hearing ordinances. Um, the first is ordinance twenty three oh eight to establish uh exceed the municipal budget appropriation limit and establish a uh a cap bank. Do I have a motion?
I have to read.
I'm sorry.
The following ordinance published here with was first read by title only on April thirteenth, two thousand twenty three and posted on the bulletin board of the lobby of the municipal building and borough website. Ordinance twenty three dash zero eight, calendar year twenty twenty three ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limit and to establish a cap bank, NJSA forty eight colon four dash forty five point fourteen.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Oh, anybody from the public have any comments? On ordinance twenty three dash zero eight? Not seeing any. Do you have a motion?
So moved. Lovasola.
Second.
Okay.
Councilwoman Homan, absent. Councilwoman Lovasola?
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell?
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole?
Yes.
Councilman Yakarino?
Yes.
Councilman Delavatio?
Yes.
Okay, next we have second reading and public hearing for ordinance twenty three uh dash zero nine. This is the bond ordinance for capital improvement. Linda, please read.
The following ordinance published here with was first read by title only on April twenty seventh, two thousand twenty three and posted on the bulletin board of the lobby of the municipal building and borough website. Ordinance twenty three dash zero nine, bond ordinance to authorize the making of various public improvements and the acquisition of new additional or replacement equipment and machinery, new information technology equipment, new additional furnishings and new automotive vehicle vehicles, including original apparatus and equipment in, by, and for the borough of Allendale and the county of Bergen, state of New Jersey, to appropriate the sum of one million three hundred ninety thousand five hundred to pay the cost thereof to make a down payment or fully fund appropriations from the Capital Improvement Fund to authorize issuance of bonds to finance such appropriation and to provide for the issuance of bond anticipation notes in anticipation of the issuance of such funds.
Is there anybody from the public that would like to comment on ordinance twenty three dash oh nine? Not seeing anybody. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Oh, kiddo.
Councilwoman Lovasola?
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell?
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole?
Yes.
Councilman Yakarino?
Yes.
Councilman Delavatio?
Yes.
Okay, next we have ordinance twenty three dash one zero. Um, we have our second reading and public comment and ordinance to amend um the language for the um new uh parking meters um in our downtown.
The following ordinance published here with was first read by title only on April twenty seventh, two thousand twenty three and posted on the bulletin board of the lobby of the municipal building and borough website. Ordinance twenty three dash ten, in ordinance to amend, supplement, and revise Article eleven, section sixty two C of chapter two fifty two of the Borough Code of the Borough of Allendale entitled Vehicles and Traffic.
Standby from the public have any comments on ordinance twenty three dash ten? Not seeing anybody. Do a roll call, please.
Motion?
Motion?
So moved.
Sorry.
Second, Delavatio.
Okay. Councilwoman Lovasola?
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell?
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole?
Yes.
Councilman Yakarino?
Yes.
Councilman Delavatio?
Yes.
Okay. Right, that's nice. Ordinance twenty three dash eleven, in ordinance to amend, supplement, revise uh chapter six and chapter six's language about our uh goose patrol. Um, does anybody from the um public?
The following ordinance published here with was first read by title only on April twenty seventh, two thousand twenty three and posted on the bulletin board of the lobby of the municipal building and borough website. Ordinance twenty three dash eleven, in ordinance to amend, supplement, and revise the code of the borough of Allendale, chapter six.
I'm afraid to speak. Does anybody from the public uh wish to comment um on this ordinance, chapter six, twenty three dash eleven? Not seeing anybody? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Two seconds. Okay. Councilwoman Lovasola?
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell?
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole?
Yes.
Councilman Yakarino?
Yes.
Councilman Delavatio?
Yes.
Okay, next we have ordinance twenty three dash twelve, which is also second reading and public comment, um, which is also uh to change the language um uh from planning board to land use board. Uh, Linda, please read the ordinance.
The following ordinance published here with was first read by title only on April twenty seventh, two thousand twenty three and posted on the bulletin board of the lobby of the municipal building and borough website. Ordinance twenty three dash twelve, in ordinance to amend, supplement, and revise the code of the borough of Allendale, chapter forty.
Does anybody from the public wish to comment on this ordinance? Not seeing anybody? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Lovasola?
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell?
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole?
Yes.
Councilman Yakarino?
Yes.
Councilman Delavatio?
Yes.
Okay, next we have our resolutions. Uh, we have uh the local public budget, resolution twenty three dash one thirty six. Title, read by title only. Um, anybody from the public wish to comment on resolution twenty three dash one thirty six municipal budget? Okay, so then we have resolution twenty three dash one thirty.
Motion.
Okay, motion to approve resid- resolution twenty three dash one thirty six.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Councilwoman Homan, absent. Councilwoman Lovasola?
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell?
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole?
Yes.
Councilman Yakarino?
Yes.
Councilman Delavatio?
Yes.
Okay, next we have resolution dash uh twenty three dash one thirty seven, adoption of the twenty twenty three local municipal budget. Do I have a motion?
So moved, Delavatio.
Second?
Second.
Councilwoman Lovasola?
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell?
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole?
Yes.
Councilman Yakarino?
Yes.
Councilman Delavatio?
Yes.
Okay, next we have Bergen County open space grant application, resolution twenty three dash one thirty eight. This is Bergen County open space um park improvements. We are actually putting in for uh to improve our tennis courts up at Crestwood Lake. Potentially could be phase one, um, because uh there are some engineering issues going on up there, but I think our tennis courts would be um are going to be really appreciated by the public, especially with the explosion of pickleball. So um, does anybody from the public wish to comment on resolution twenty three dash one thirty eight? Is that a smile I see out there? Um, do I have a motion to approve resolution twenty three dash one thirty eight?
So moved, Yakarino.
Second, please?
Second.
Councilwoman Lovasola?
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell?
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole?
Yes.
Councilman Yakarino?
Yes.
Councilman Delavatio?
Yes.
Next we have the consent agenda, consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved, O'Connell.
Second, please?
Second.
Okay.
Councilwoman uh Lovasola?
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell?
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole?
Yes.
Councilman Yakarino?
Yes.
Councilman Delavatio?
Yes.
All righty, any unfinished unfinished business?
Did I give my report?
I'll get that.
Oh.
Do you need to sign too?
I do.
So on behalf of the holiday observers, thank you for passing resolution twenty three dash one forty one.
Excellent.
Yeah, like the president and so.
I know.
All right, um, do we have any new business? All right, we're going to finish up our committee reports. We have um Councilwoman Lovasola.
Yeah, so you heard our wonderful um budget presentation, so thank you again for that. Um, so I'm going to use my time just to talk about two upcoming things. Um, the first is the library gathering tomorrow night. Um, from seven to nine, it's um, the library will be hosting a gathering for residents new to Allendale in the past three years. This welcome event will offer our newest neighbors who may not have had the opportunity to get to know one another, especially during the pandemic, an opportunity to mingle with fellow adults in a relaxed environment with refreshments and music. Um, a list of Allendale babysitters composed of scouts who may have received babysitting training and certification will be furnished to all the registrants. If you want to still RSVP, there's still time. Um, let the library know, either give them a call or email them at info@allendale.vcclf.org. Um, also, May twentieth is our environmental cleanup day in town. Thank you to John Gill for getting the fire finished after some tweaks and edits to it. Um, that'll be going out tomorrow. It'll be posted on Facebook and on the borough website. Uh, what that day entails is from nine AM until one PM here at Borough Hall, there will be an electronics recycling, there'll be paper shredding. Um, the police are doing, um, what are you guys doing again?
Prescription drug.
Prescription drugs, right, take back. That's right. And at the, uh, there'll be a um uh food drive uh for the Center for Food Action, both here at Borough Hall and at the John Fell House. And at the John Fell House will be collecting clothing and the full list of, actually, it's more than clothing, um, other stuff that's going to be recycled um, uh, from nine AM to one PM. Um, check the website for the full list, a lot of stuff there. Um, also, the electronic recycling does include, again, refrigerators and air conditioners, so that, I know that's a big deal. That is for Allendale residents only. And then I just wanted to echo Amy on um remembering Stiles Thomas. Um, he, he, you know, husband, father, friend to so many of us, environmentalist, volunteer, um, nature and bird enthusiast. Um, and at the Fell House, he was a big friend of ours too, and he would come at Christmas time um and read to the children, uh, 'Twas the Night Before Christmas. And that was always something to look forward to. Um, I am going to miss him tremendously. He wanted to make it to a hundred. He almost made it there. It's probably one of the only things he ever fell short on, and I just want to thank him for his friendship. Um, and I give my deepest condolences to Lily and his amazing wife and his family and all of us here who who knew him and loved him.
Excellent, thank you. Um, I think I'll give my mayor's report now. Um, Crestwood Lake, uh registrations are still open, but I'd just like to say that the revenue is is still um pretty good, so which is good news for our budget. Um, we're in line to where we are next year and hopefully we'll surpass that. Um, two twenty, if anybody's driven by it, it's going up. Done. Um, crazy how fast it's going. Um, almost a little too fast because I want to have our building uh uh in front of it built uh almost at the same time. But it's been um a really great process so far. The residents have um really been pleased with the the work and the level of noise, I would just say lack of. So you could actually see when you go by it now, the courtyard, and you can see the the four levels. You can see where the elevator stair is and the staircase. So where that courtyard is, our building is going to be attached to it right in the front. Um, it is a community center and it's also going to be a gym. The library is not going to be moving in there and our borough offices will not be moving in there. The court is staying here, the council chambers are staying here, our offices are staying downstairs, and the library is staying where the library is staying. So I heard there is some confusion about that in town. So I just wanted to clarify that. The only thing that is going to be there is a large community center for all of our wonderful organizations in town to use, and it is for Allendale residents only. And the other side will be um a gym, a fitness area, people want to use it for that, basketball, volleyball, pickleball, whatever they want, and also uh a community kitchen that's going to be overlooking the gym. So it's going to be a great space for Allendale, because as you know, this is our only space right here. So we're really, really excited for it. Um, went to the chamber meeting this week, uh, which was actually a great chamber meeting and um was starting to get a couple more businesses in town. There's a new hair salon that just moved in. Um, so the two young ladies that opened that were here, so it was good to see new businesses coming into Allendale. Uh, had a meeting with Restaurant L that uh coming along nicely, saw the inside of it, so that's uh um, they're going to have really nice signings, going to be a really nice addition to Allendale, looking forward to that as well. Also had my first coffee with the mayor. Also had my first coffee with the mayor. Um, uh, Councilman Yakarino was with me most of the day. We think we had about twelve to fourteen people come. Um. It was a nice turnout. We had our uh chief of police behind us, working as a concessionaire, as a volunteer for um Allendale Rec. So a lot of people said I was very, very brave to have coffee with the mayor. I'm like, did you see who was behind me? I'm fine. So it was a lot of fun, a beautiful, beautiful day. Um, I would say the hot topic is always was the deer and um we pretty much told them that we.
Said the Saddle River.
Done whatever we did with the deer. There was a little bit of information that we're going to um look into. There is potentially some new um sterilization, so I said I would look into that and I, I will.
So deer was talking about more than pickleball?
Yes, believe it or not, the deer has talked about more than pickleball, so um.
I don't think anybody brought a pickleball at all.
No. Nope, 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 so. Um, but I really received a lot of great feedback, a ton of emails actually about it, so um we'll have to do it again someday. Alright, so that's it for my report. Um, so let's go into committee reports and Linda, should we know?
Um, the clerk's office will be open to, next Tuesday, May sixteenth, for late night voter registration.
Okay, great.
That's it.
Anything else? Anything else on voting? You went to your voting class?
Um, I did take a training class um for the new voting machine. Uh, the setup's going to be a little different uh when you vote.
Mm-hmm.
They'll, it's, it's easy, so they'll figure it out.
Good, yeah. Thanks for getting up to date on that.
Yeah, no problem.
John Gill?
Uh, working with the clerk's office on a number of projects. Um, some updates on the website that are uh being amended to corporate for different departments that I'm working on. Um, and of course, always uh thing in the beginning of the month, which is the newsletter, which I'm compiling. Going to do a supplemental little thing over the weekend, just because we have some events like our late night and the twentieth. Paper shredding event all day, so I'll do like a little supplemental thing before that. Um, and then hopefully get that up soon.
Excellent. Allison, Garcia?
Um, I really think your report besides the budget and the capital ordinance uh going through tonight, but I'd like to thank you, Mayor. For making it such a smooth transition, I guess, with getting the budget done and the capital. And hopefully there's been no delay in anything in coming on board and it's been cool that I can be happier.
Excellent, perfect. We're happy you're here. Chief Dylan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Working with John Gill on some required website postings. Welcome every resident to visit our new approved webpage, which is attached to borough site, allendalenj.gov. Uh, John has been instrumental in bringing us into compliance, so thank you. Excited for new officers to start, looking forward to continued departmental growth supported by the mayor and council, so thank you.
And Bray Whip?
So I wasn't going to speak about two twenty, two thirty, but uh I couldn't help as I drove in tonight, just noticing the dimension of the construction going on. And, and it, it caused me to reflect on the uh, the first audacious steps of uh eminent domain and uh acquisition of the property and. Making sure that it wasn't uh, whatever it was, three hundred and fifty townhouses. Um, so again, without the, you know, being self-ludatory of the governing body, but you in particular, Mayor, because you've been with the project forever.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it's, it's very, very impressive to see not only what's going up, um, but what that project is as opposed to what could have been. I think that's, you know, really a tribute to uh, to the borough and the governing body. Um, beyond that, working with the clerk's office on some of the resolutions and ordinances on tonight's agenda. Uh, TJ from my office uh on the ongoing quest of responses to Oprah. Uh, on tonight's agenda was the uh extension by one year of our cell tower leases. Um, but I think that that's also a cue to the governing body that uh, uh, we're going to have to be actively engaged going forward. In uh, you know, evaluating renewals, and I think Paul mentioned it in his report. Unfortunately, uh, the dollars and cents associated with cell tower leases are not quite what they were in the past. Um, so that's something that uh as a revenue source, we may have to figure out where that's going to be on any future lease extensions.
Yeah.
Um, work with Ron and Mike Reeland on a lot of property related issues, uh, some of them emanating from the, the water utility sale, some, you know, unrelated. Um, working with the public safety committee and the chief on, um, I think uh some big ticket major items that will certainly. Uh, lead to the, the reshaping of the table of organization, the, the complement of officers working for the department. Uh, and are going to situate uh the borough, I think, in a, in a very exciting way going forward. Uh, keep it, have your hands full, but uh, uh, I think uh some very big items have been put back into place over the last sixty days, so I think that's, that's very, very important. Um, the other uh aspect, the ongoing uh water utility sale, which obviously was a big driver in the report we heard tonight. Um, we had our uh weekly uh call this morning. Uh, the good news is that uh Violia, and, and obviously we can't get to recording easements and finalizing the transactions and releasing that escrow money. Uh, until some of the i's are dotted and t's are crossed, but Violia has by and large completed their mark out. Uh, they're surveying, we expect very, very shortly that we'll have the meets and bounds in hand. We'll be able to then prepare the easement agreements, get those recorded. And with that is an additional cash flow from the escrow money. That's pretty much it.
Yep, excellent. Alright, so would that open the meeting to the public? One last time, anybody from the public wish to speak? Not seeing anyone, we'll adjourn the meeting. Ad- adjourn the meeting. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
All in favor?
Second, second.
All in favor?
Aye.